Okay, my board is here. My microphone's hot. I've got people going around in the hall. So if you can find a seat. The last we checked in with our heroes, they have just defeated Article VII.
She said see. I know, I'm sorry.
That's a debt letter. We'll move on to, we can leave the meeting and move on to Article VIII. Mr. Allen, are you going to do Article VIII?
I approve Article VIII as warned.
Article VIII, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate the sum of $130,000 for the Town Highway Equipment Reserve Fund. Is there a second to Article VIII? You got one? Article VIII is moved and seconded. Mr. Allen?
Um, I think after what we did this morning, it'd be something a little more enlightening to discuss, talk about. Um, I've never been here to talk about trucks, but I kind of want to give you a little more history of where we are as a town. This is basically for equipment, but also our trucks. And, uh, we've been brought up about 10-wheelers and six-wheelers. But going back to 98, we actually, the government started to set goals that we'd have zero emissions. By 2010, we started to have diesel trucks that put out zero emissions. They're very expensive and we were one of the few towns that actually moved up and started to purchase them. We were also one of the first towns in Southern Vermont that by 2016, 100% of our fleet was zero emissions. Uh, it cost us more money for them, but in the long run, it was the best decision that we could have made because there was a lot of other manufacturers that just paid a penalty and now it caught up to them. The government was closing them down and now they basically are in serious trouble. All the towns that have those trucks don't know what to do with them. Uh, so we're actually should be proud of ourselves that our trucks are running around, not making any pollution. We're moving into new categories now where they want better fuel economy, but everything is to clean the environment up and I'm saying we're one of the leaders in the pack for doing it. Also what's happened because we're there, a resale value of our trucks are tremendously high. Trucks that we just traded in last year in 52, the towns that had the same trucks that didn't have it, we're getting anywhere from zero to 10,000 in trade. So what we're always looking at is what does it cost us to own these vehicles for the life of them? We're now purchasing trucks that we keep for seven years because they have a full seven year warranty, so we don't have very much unanticipated expenses. When we get all done, I think we've been tracking our cost of ownership without, without the minor repairs. It costs us about $19,000 a year from the time we buy it to the time we trade it in. The state average is 27 and there's a lot of towns that are $36,000 a year trying to get those situations fixed back again. So as a town, it's still pretty good that we're in good shape and we're going to be headed in that because everything from now on that we trade in is going to be worth more. And what's going to end up being is we're going to be end up actually leveling funding that for a while because I don't see any much more anticipated cost in the next few years. So anyways, that's, so last year, we had a, we had a carryover in that fund of about 50,000. We voted 130. We end up having 180. We purchased a 2019 truck and we also purchased a half a roller, as you heard. The rollers turned out to be a great asset because what we're doing is we grade the road in dirt. We're packing them to keep them so that the water doesn't turn around and run it up. We're still having, like every town, tremendous problems with dirt roads and ruts. It's getting wetter, it's getting harder to take care of. But we're, and obviously later on when we try to address how we're going to take care of the road, but the equipment we have in this town is just A1, but also as I said, I feel like it's costing us less than most towns are.
Are there questions or discussion on Article VIII? Mr. Clark? Just out of curiosity, Craig, what's in our fleet? It's got a diesel engine in it and, uh, what's the aging on that equipment?
Um, we're actually, we traded in 2014, so like I said, we're, you know, we're in the, we're heading to the model year 2021, so we're trading them maybe six to seven years. Okay.
Let me restate that question. How many trucks have we got? What are their ages? And what other equipment does the town own? And just to narrow it, so we're talking about, um, heavier equipment, not chainsaws, um, equipment with a diesel engine. It might be bulldozers or road grader, um, a loader. What have we got?
Um, Chuck's in the background. He probably better than the engine app, but I would say we have six trucks. Chuck, you could correct me, but we have six trucks, a road grader, uh, backhoe, excavator, two motors, uh, two of them.
I appreciate that. Pardon me for burning time like this, but my curiosity, I guess, is, um, since we have this equipment, somebody, um, must know what the agent is on it, uh, what the likely replacement cycle is. And I'm actually trying to give you a platform here where, um, you can, uh, show us that you, you really do take care of this town. And you just mentioned your, uh, capital reserve fund. I'm interested in what you, as a select board, are predicting for your town, uh, highway, um, capital needs, not just over like this year or next year, but over, say, the next five or 10 years. This may not be a question that you are prepared for and it's not at all intended as a gamble, but I have a sense that what we're hearing is in terms of the adequacy of the fleet and the cost of carrying it, that you're telling us that we're in pretty good shape. I'm just simply curious as to, you know, what we got and what you're anticipating for long, long-term capital needs. Got that on top of your head?
No. Yep, I can follow up and give you the answers to that, but I think, okay, yeah. Basically, we're in good shape, to be honest with you, on it. Our more capital ones, those are the ones where we kind of gear up and we know we're coming is the road grader, which we just purchased, so that puts us, those are every 10, 15 years. Everything else is on a shorter term.
Ms. Mitchell?
Speaking of the road grader, when we got the road grader, I asked if the town crew would be trained how to use the road grader. From what I've seen, I'm not convinced they were trained how to use that neat computerized road grader. Were they? And if they weren't, it's tied, maybe some of this extra money in the, uh, highway department could be used for training instead of letting them learn by making mistakes.
My first answer would be yes, but I need Chuck to verify. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And people, people have come out and they're half as good now as the old operator, which took it for 30 years, so I just thought that was pretty good. They've only done it for two years.
Further discussion of Article VIII. Mr. Major?
Hi, David Major. Um, this is, I, maybe not the best place for this, but, um, the use of the roads on Sundays has increased rather dramatically, uh, with Amazon Prime. And I, I in fact have had to pull out Amazon Prime trucks from our road on Sundays. So, um, I, I, I want to suggest to the select board that you, uh, perhaps, um, uh, recognize that need and, and spend a little time at some point figuring out a way to, uh, do more road maintenance on Sundays than, and I'm not happy about it, but it seems to be the case that, that we're using the roads much more and especially Amazon Prime, the roads, much more on Sundays than, uh, used to be the case.
Aren't they going to drum this in?
Drum, that's the idea.
Further discussion of Article VIII. Up in the corner here, I'm going to make you up.
Hello, Mike, it's Mike Clark. Um, we just had a very lengthy discussion before lunch about what we need to do with approximately a half a million dollar surplus. In light of that, I'm going to, uh, advocate that we do not need to raise an additional $130,000 to put in a reserve fund.
Further discussion of Article VIII. Ready for the question? All those in favor of Article VIII, $130,000 to the Highway Equipment Reserve Fund, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. Guys do have it. Article VIII is approved. Article IX, Ms. Harlow.
I approve Article IX as warned.
Article IX, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for the Bridge Rehabilitation Reserve Fund. Is there a second for Article IX? Article IX is moved and seconded. Ms. Harlow?
Uh, the bridge fund currently has $106,000, $483 in it. From FY '19, we had $123,000 and $3 left. If you add this $15,000, it brings the total to $13733. So this is how we spent it. In this year's budget, we paid $31,550 to paint the beams on Goldie's Bridge and the bridge on Westminster West Road, the East Putney Brook. Then the remaining is $106,000 and change. From that, we pay for the town's portion of the deck replacement on the bridge on, uh, Route 121 over the Saxons River. So that's going to take place in the summer of 2022. Um, and the state has deemed this bridge in poor condition and we voted to not totally replace it, but to repair the deck. So the cost of the repair was $802,000. We have to pay 5%, that's about $53,000. Um, we've already started paying for the bridge engineering and design. So after that, we'll have, uh, $53,383 remaining in the bridge fund. But coming up is, um, the next bridge will be the one at the intersection of Patch Road and Westminster West Road. That's going to be, have to be replaced and, um, the state's pushing that up on the rankings of bridges that have to be replaced.
Now, I've, I've lived in Westminster West since 1978. I think that darn bridge has been condemned twice by the state and I just don't even think about it. But anyway, Mr. Major?
I think this is kind of a follow-up from the last speaker, um, in the previous motion and from what, uh, the Kevin Hughes was talking about when we were talking about the general, uh, operating funds, which we just voted down. I believe in that, um, maybe I'll just, uh, offer an amendment to this and just see how it flies. Uh, I, uh, would offer the amendment that we strike "will raise" and just say, the voters of the town of Westminster, uh, appropriate the sum of $15,000 for the Bridge Rehabilitation Reserve Fund. Uh, because I, I'm, I'm concerned that we may be, uh, we may be telling ourselves that to raise, that increase our taxes to fund these reserve funds, then we're going to have, we have this surplus we have to spend. Uh, we don't want to have our operating budget get, be reduced by a large amount one year and have that the next year be hit with a large tax increase, uh, when we could be spreading, spreading the funds out a little bit. So, um, anyway, I'll offer that as an amendment. Thank you.
Is there a second to Mr. Major's amendment? Is that a second? Are you seconding that there? Did we get a second? Okay. Uh, amendment moved and seconded to strike "will raise" and, so the motion, the article would read, "To see if the voters of the town of Westminster will appropriate the sum of $15,000."
Hey, pleasure. We just discussed this. You said that the article has to say "raise" or we won't have the money. So what does that do?
It means it's got to go out of the money they already got.
Which we did pass anything.
Oh, they got $550,000 in the bank. I mean, that's, that's the point is to come out of that. Um, discussion of Mr. Major's proposed amendment. Mr. Bibi?
My only concern on changing any of these articles, the wooden on any of these articles on the floor. Sorry, my voice is raised pretty low. The only concern I have on changing any of the articles on the floor, even though we don't have a budget at this point in time, is all these articles go through the town's attorney as far as wording and the way they work for the town of Westminster. So I'm a little bit leery about changing the wording on any of these articles, um, at this point in time without having any concern about it, but that's just my thought.
Mr. Bibi strikes a note of caution. Um, further discussion on Mr. Major's amendment to strike the "will raise" part. Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
I can't tell whether the nays were just a little louder or... All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. I've asked for it. You see anybody who shouldn't be voting? I'm basically, basically in the honor system. All those opposed, please raise your hands. Okay, thank you. Uh, the results of your vote are 31 in favor of the amendment, 50 opposed, the amendment fails. Back to the main article, $15,000 for the bridge fund. Further discussion of Article IX? Yes.
June Street of Westminster, I would just click some clarification on the fund balance policy that would that amendment even been able to come to light with the new fund balance policy that we have?
I don't, I don't think the, um, reserve fund policy has anything to do with this reserve fund. It's a different...
Well, if we weren't going to raise the money, he was... Maybe I'm wrong. He was proposing to use the fund surplus, were you not?
Right, I'm assuming.
So would you even been able to do that with the policy that we have in place?
I'm assuming, I mean, yeah, the whole surplus would not have to go into the emergency, what do we call it?
The new policy fund, which we also...
That's never been funded. They've never put money in that fund. It's all sitting in general.
So what, what June is referencing is she's wondering if the money was in our reserve policy fund, which was established last year. And, um, what's happened is the money is sitting in our general fund. It's never been moved to that reserve fund. If it was removed, moved to the reserve fund, they'd have to come back to us to spend it. So really, they would have the money in the general fund to fund this without raising it from taxation. They can appropriate it from the general fund, but that's what was just voted down. What I want everyone here to, to, just very quickly, we had $550,000 in our general fund that was as of the end of 2019. Our administration has been spending that money all year long. I don't know how much is in there. The reason we're having a special town meeting is to deal with spending that came out of that fund for the town hall that we never approved. So we don't have $550,000 right now, is what I, I think everybody needs to understand. So to talk about taking 130 to pay for some highway equipment and then take another 15 for this motion and any other future motion, or, I'm sorry, articles, does not make sense because we don't know how much money we have in there today because our administration has been spending it all year long.
Katie, at this point in time, we haven't touched the $550,000 surplus. Period, end of discussion. $21,000 has been overspent on the town hall at this point in time because we didn't have the money to take out of the surplus or we're not taking the money out of the surplus to spend on the town hall, to finish the town hall. None of the $550,000 has been touched yet. We voted to move $100,000 of it at the last select board meeting and give it back to the taxpayers. But however, that's not going to happen now until we have this next special town meeting. But none of that money has been touched yet. It hasn't been spent. The only money that's been spent on the town hall is what was appropriated and what was in the capital reserve fund for that building. Does that answer the question? $21,000 of it has been overspent. We didn't have that much money.
Is there an existing contract that we have money due on?
We haven't...
The renovations on the town hall? I guess, that's where I think I'm confused.
Phase one and phase two have been paid for. The first phase was giving a second means of egress into the building. That was phase one. Phase two was putting on the front doors, excuse my voice, was putting on the front doors and putting the man lift in and getting actually heat into the upstairs meeting room with the historical society, et cetera. The balance of the contract was to change the existing rooms inside to get the closets in, to get the IT space and so forth done. That contract, we validated, validated, I guess would be a better word for it, at the last meeting. Uh, the work, the contracts we've had since July 1st are their balance. Um, at this point in time, we have only spent $21,000 of that, that we didn't have in the account.
Okay, I guess I was misunderstanding that there was a contract from the builder to finish work.
There is.
It was either 190 or 90,000, I'm not sure. And, and my assumption was that'd be coming out of our general fund, so I just wanted to share my thoughts about what the general fund balance would be if those were cleared. So I apologize if I misspoke.
Yes. Um, I think the discussion that, that people are trying to have is where the money for this article comes from and I think that is germane to the ear.
Well, the amendment was defeated. But the amendment was defeated.
The amendment was defeated. The, the amendment was defeated. The article is still from us and how it's funded is still an aspect of the article. Okay, thank you. Further discussion on Article IX. I saw him stop in front, well, are you, this, okay, this stop, please.
I would like to know if we've overspent it by 21,000, Sheldon, where do you think that $21,000 came from? If it's not from the surplus that we started with 550,000. If we've overspent, where is the 21 coming from?
Got no idea, Cindy, I can't tell you.
It's coming from the general fund surplus.
Probably it wasn't.
Thank you.
Further discussion of Article IX? Yes.
Rick's going over to, dear Ron. Apparently, I don't hear well. There was a lot of numbers thrown out on what was in, in the bridge construction fund, what was spent, et cetera, et cetera. $15,000 doesn't seem to be an awful lot to add to it. The last number I heard before that, I think, was the $50,000 range, which, like I say, I don't hear well. Would you alleviate some of my concerns that there's going to be enough money in that bridge reconstruction fund?
There will be enough money in there to pay for, um, our portion of...
Use the mic, please.
There will be enough money to pay for our portion of the Route 121 bridge. We have to pay 5%, which is...
And I'm presuming from that that everything else is covered up too?
So, yes.
Before that point?
Yes.
And you're planning to head no further than that particular bridge?
Right, so in a couple of years, we're going to have to replace the bridge and over the East Putney Brook will. And, um, the state comes up with rankings and, you know, comes and gives us options and we have to come up with part of them. And the state comes up with a great deal of money, but the town also has to pay.
I understand that $15,000 is not an awful lot when you start throwing in the bridges, so I have a little bit of concern.
They're expensive.
You're exactly right. Thank you.
Further discussion of Article Nine? Ready for the question? Seeing no hands. All those in favor of passing Article Nine to see if the voters of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the Bridge Rehabilitation Reserve Fund? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it? The ayes do have it. Article Nine is approved. Article Ten, Mr. Beebe?
I move the article as warned.
Article Ten, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster vote pursuant to VSA Thirty-Two, Section Three Eight, Three Two, Paragraph Seven, to exempt from taxation for a period of five years the real estate of the Westminster Aqueduct Society. Is there a second to Article Ten? Yes, we have a second discussion of Article Ten. Mr. Beebe?
Are there any questions to Article?
How much money are we talking about?
This, the Westminster Aqueduct and similar entities within the town of Westminster have always been granted in basically no taxes for periods of five years. The Westminster Swimming Pool is another one of them. Westminster Aqueduct in Northwestminster. It is not a lot of money. There's not a lot of real estate involved in it. It is something that's been done for as long as I've been in town as a child and as a select person, so that's pretty much all I can tell you.
I think the answer would be that the effect of granting a tax exemption, obviously, is to remove the property from the grand list. So whatever the difference on the grand list is, determines the difference in taxes. Mr. Wickford?
I just want to say, I have a will. Nobody exempts my will, so why should the Aqueduct Society be exempted?
Well, did you ask?
I'm asking now.
It's got to be on the board, huh? That was a mildly critical... Further discussion of Article Ten? Yes?
Rachel Cohen Lister, in the grand list. Westminster Aqueduct Society, real value, seventy-five hundred dollars.
Shocked.
Thank you.
Further discussion of Article Ten? It's always fun when you can throw in some reality. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Ten to see if the voters of the town of Westminster vote pursuant to VSA Thirty-Two, Section Three Eight, Three Two, Paragraph Seven, to exempt the tax from taxation for a period of five years the real estate of the Westminster Aqueduct Society. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it? The ayes do have it. Article Ten is approved. Article Eleven? Mr. Beebe?
I move the article as warned.
Article Eleven, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster vote pursuant to VSA Thirty-Two, Section Three Eight, Four Zero. Those of you who are following along know this is a different section. To exempt from taxation for a period of five years the real estate of the Westminster Fire Department District Number Three. Is there a second to Article Eleven? Article Eleven is second, moved and seconded. Discussion of Article Eleven? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving Article Eleven, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, nay? Article Eleven is approved. Article Twelve, Mr. Beebe?
I move the article as warned.
Article Twelve, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster vote pursuant to VSA Thirty-Two, Section Three Eight, Three Two, Paragraph Seven, to exempt from taxation for a period of five years the real estate of the Westminster Recreational Club, Inc. Is there a second to Article Twelve? Article Twelve is moved and seconded. Mr. Beebe?
Any questions? Is the Westminster Swimming Pool located on...
Further discussion of Article Twelve? Seeing none. All of those in favor of Article Twelve, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, nay? Article Twelve is carried. Article Thirteen? This is an Article Nine that's on by petition, so it will be moved by the select board member, but may be addressed by some other member who knows more about it, other member of the Assembly. Anyway, Article Thirteen, Ms. Harlow?
I move the article as warned.
Article Thirteen, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred dollars in addition to the sum forty-six hundred dollars included in the budget proposed by the select board, making the total fifty-four hundred dollars for the support of the Westminster Gazette. You can see those numbers on page seventeen of your town report. The Westminster Gazette's report is on page eighty-eight. Ms. Harlow, do you wish to speak to the article?
I thought Charmaine Handy, she said she, there she is.
Okay. Ms. Handy?
Hi, my name is Charmaine Handy. I'm the board chairperson for the Westminster Gazette. First, would like to thank everybody for your support of the Gazette, whether it's a community member that's contributed articles as a underwriter, as an advertiser, or just somebody that enjoys reading it. We do have copies in the back of the Gazette if you haven't seen one yet. There's also a write-up explaining, sort of, some of the financial and updates from this past year. This is the second year of the three-year process where we have asked for an increase of eight hundred dollars towards the Gazette. And we have a new... Some of our expenses have changed just a little bit, so that's why we're asking for additional support. And again, just really appreciate your support of the Gazette.
Discussion of Article Thirteen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Thirteen, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, nay? Article Thirteen is approved. Article Fourteen is Young. Article Fourteen, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred dollars in addition to the sum twenty-five hundred dollars included in the budget proposed by the select board, making the total three thousand dollars for the support of Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEFCa, to assist Westminster in responding to the emergency needs of the community and providing all available and applicable services to families and individuals in need. Do you wish to speak, Ms. Young?
Well, just to say that this is the second petition year. If approved, they will need one more successful request of the same amount of money before they become part of our budget starting in July of two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Stoddard?
Thank you. Nathan Stoddard. I was previously employed for SEFCa for nine years. I was the operations manager for the weatherization department. I've seen firsthand throughout Wyndham and Windsor County. SEFCa, let me back up. SEFCa is a community, in case you don't know, is a community action agency. It's an anti-poverty, community-based nonprofit organization serving the community of Windsor County. Their mission is to enable people to cope with and reduce the hardships of poverty, create sustainable self-sufficiency, and reduce the cause and move towards eliminating poverty. On page eighty in your town report, you can see, they spelled out what their services they provided directly to Westminster residents. That amount of money that they provide to Westminster residents is a drop in the bucket to what they do within Wyndham and Windsor County. The three thousand dollars helps their objectives or their goals. The five thousand dollars is just an increase to better further those objectives. I believe they've asked for an increase for many years. I think they've done it twenty-five hundred for as long as I can remember. But the five hundred dollars is just an add so they can help better keep up the pace with the need in forward with trying to eliminate that goal of poverty. There is a website also on there that has their full strategic plan and their annual report. So if you have any specific questions as to, like we've been talking about today, where money comes from, where money goes, it's clearly defined in those two reports. If you have any other questions that you haven't answered?
Discussion of Article Fourteen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Fourteen, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, nay? Article Fourteen appears to carry. Article Fourteen does carry. Article Fourteen is approved. Article Fifteen? I should, a little explanation. Those two articles were agencies that had partial funding in the select board budget. We're now getting into articles for agencies that don't have funding in the budget upfront. So these are starting from, that's why the other ones have those already and add-on. These ones are just pure new funding. Mr. Hughes?
I move the article as warned.
Article Fifteen, shall the voters of the town of Westminster raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand dollars for the support of Senior Solutions Council of Aging for Southeastern Vermont, Inc., to provide services to the aging and disabled residents of the town? Is there a second for Article Fifteen? There's a, there's a second. Article Fifteen is moved and seconded. The budget page that it's on is also seventeen. The report is on page seventy-nine. Mr. Hughes, would you like to speak to the article?
Is anyone here for him?
Anyone from Senior Solutions who would like to speak in favor? Yes.
Hi, I'm Anne White. I'm the community outreach nurse for Wyndham and Windsor County. A little bit about Senior Solutions. So Senior Solutions is requesting a thousand dollars from the town of Westminster. Our mission is to promote the well-being and dignity of older adults. Our vision is that every person will age in place, in the place of their choice, with the support they need and the opportunity for meaningful relationships and active engagement in the community. Senior Solutions has served Wyndham and Windsor County since nineteen seventy-three. And our agency is seeking funds from the town because we've experienced a trend of decreased fixed government funding while the population of older adults needing services has increased. Vermont has been remarkably successful in enabling frail elders who require a nursing home level of care to remain in their homes. However, one consequence of the state's success in that, those needing services in their homes have far more significant health issues and require much more assistance with activities of daily living than in the past. So town support helps the agency to avoid waiting lists and to provide more services which can strengthen the community safety net and reduce family stress and emergency calls. Some statistics from some of the programs that Senior Solutions has offered, has assisted Westminster residents. We have a senior helpline which provides information and assistance, and we have serviced ninety-eight calls and office visits to Westminster residents in the past year, as well as we've assisted thirty-three residents with Medicare assistance. In-home social services, we've provided seventeen elder residents with in-home case management and other home-based services for a hundred and sixty-six hours. Nutrition services and programs, nineteen Westminster seniors received two thousand two hundred and eighty-nine meals at home through our partnership with Kernham. We also help fund a monthly congregate meal held at the Westminster Congregational Church. We also provide grants and funding for caregiver respite. And how the town funds are used are all used for the programs that I explained in many more. If you have any questions, there's board members here?
Further discussion of Article Fifteen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Fifteen, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, nay? Article Fifteen is approved. Article Sixteen, Ms. Harlow?
I move the article as warned.
Article Sixteen, shall the voters of the town of Westminster appropriate the sum of seven thousand five hundred dollars to be raised by taxation to support, to support the cost of operation and maintenance of the Westminster Institute and Butterfield Library? Is there a second to Article Sixteen? Yes, Article Sixteen is moved and seconded. Ms. Harlow?
This request is up from last year by one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. This is their first petition year, so if approved, they will need two more successful requests of the same amount of money before they become part of our budget starting in July of two thousand and twenty-two. Jim, Matt, I'll...
Mr. Matta?
Thank you. On behalf of the Institute Board Managers, we really appreciate this funding. The Institute, some of you may know this, some may not, it's on a town building. It's owned by an organization called the Westminster East Parish. Kind of Louisiana-sounding name that the legislature came up with in the nineteenth century. And late nineteenth century was given limited municipal authority, so, you know, building with money or service. And the Institute itself was dedicated in July of nineteen twenty-four, so we're coming close to its twentieth anniversary. And the money and the drive to do that was led by a man named George Daskum, so you know that name for the Daskum Trust. And the Butterfield Library name comes because a man who lived and died in Boston, named Isaac Butterfield, spent part of his childhood in Westminster and left money for that program. So that's where that all comes from. And those people who set it up initially, set up an investment fund that still is in existence today and still funds the majority of the way, but not quite enough without depleting it, and we don't want to do that. We'd like it to be there for another hundred years. So what we've done recently, if you've been in the building lately or when you win the vote on Tuesday, you'll notice something. The entryway has been upgraded, and we're trying to replace some of the nineteen fifties and sixties types of changes that were made, lines, et cetera, with more period-appropriate pieces. You'll see some of those. If you go into the meeting room to the left of the gym when you're in there, you'll have a chance to see the improvements that are made in that room, which we think are quite substantial. And also put a plug in for Westminster Cares, which will be serving goodies in that room all day that day, so that's another reason to go in there. So we've made a lot of changes in the building, and going forward, the gymnasium where you'll be voting is due for an upgrade, and we're looking, we're looking to that in a few years. Outdoors, we've removed an underground oil storage tank, which was kind of a ticking liability, and it tested fine when it came out, so we're glad of that. A gazebo was generously donated by the Westminster family. That's been installed and will be able to be used this year. And we put in a stormwater drain because while the law says the state will control its own stormwater and not let it run onto your property, it doesn't seem to work that way. And it was undermining the driveway, so that was an expensive, but we hope worth a while expense. And also, those of you who worry about the shock absorbers when you park me out back, the totally weakened this year as well. Going forward... Back on? Going forward, again, through the generous support of the Daskum Trust, this spring we'll be replacing the timber, pressure-treated timber frame rail that's in front of where you park out front with granite posts and chains that will be more appropriate to the original style of the building. We'd like to see it return to some of its original charm by the time the hundredth anniversary rolls around, so we'll be doing some of that. And there's a lot more information in the annual report. It's on page sixty-six about the library, what's going on in the library specifically, which serves the entire town along with the Westminster West Library. the Westminster West Library, very important. So we'll be happy to answer any questions that people have. Take a look at the report inside, it's got a lot more info than that, but I don't want to take too much more time. Thanks.
Discussion of Article 16. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 16, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Article 16 is approved. Article 17, Ms. Young.
I move the article as one.
Article 17, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 for the support of the Westminster Historical Society. Is there a second for Article 17? It's moved and seconded. Discussion of Article 17, Ms. Young.
This is the second petition year. If approved, they will need one more successful request at the same amount of money before they become part of our budget, starting in July of 2021.
Further discussion of Article 17. Anyone from the society who wishes to further the conversation? Yes. Ms. Grandy.
I'm Ruth Grandy, I'm president of the Westminster Historical Society. For any of you folks here who have not been to view our museum, we hope to have it reopened again this summer following renovations that occurred in the upstairs area. What we found in some of the changes that took place are necessitating the replacement of some of the display cases due to the fact that at least one of them, the fourth leg, there's a couple of bricks. And many of them are cracked and I think that we can display a whole lot more artifacts with upgraded, better quality, better lighting cases than what we have. And we also have expended a substantial amount of money in some of the preservation of the artifacts we have that are in storage that we can't even display. And I think a better organization of the upstairs area would certainly be in our advantage and we appreciate your support.
Further discussion of Article 17. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 17, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Article 17 is approved. Article 18, Ms. Harlow.
I move the article as one.
Article 18, shall the town of Westminster vote to raise, appropriate and expend the sum of $2,500 for the support of Greater Falls Connections to provide substance abuse prevention programs to residents of the town. Is there a second for Article 18? We have the motion and a second. Discussion of Article 18, Ms. Harlow.
This is their second petition year. If approved, they'll need one more successful request of the same amount of money before they become part of our budget, starting in July 2021. Is there anyone here?
Yes.
My name is Jonathan O'Connor, I live in Westminster. I, I'm a board member for Greater Falls Connections, unfortunately, you might see that. Greater Falls Connections has been working with the community and with underserved people within the community to try and prevent substance abuse disorders going on. So they have regular meetings of various sub-organizations within their purview. Friends for Change being one of them, coming out with, Parks Place is another one. Above the Influences is a third one. So there's a number of different sub-organizations within them that they support and we're trying to promote healthy lifestyles through not getting addicted to stuff. That's all I got, thank you.
Further discussion of Article 18. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 18, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Article 18 is approved. Article 19, Mr. Beebe.
I move the article as one.
Article 19, shall the voters in the town of Westminster appropriate the sum of $9,534 to be raised by taxes for the support of Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies, SEVDS, to provide workforce and economic coordination services to the Wyndham region. Is there a second for Article 19? Yes, we have the motion and a second. Discussion of Article 19, Mr. Beebe.
This is their first petition year of this amount. If approved, they will need two more successful requests of the same amount of money before they become part of our budget. I am sure that someone from SEVDS is here to speak to this article.
Is there someone from SEVDS to speak to the article?
Good afternoon, my name is Laura Sivili, I'm the director of regional strategies for BDCC and the chief coordination for the SEVDS board. Thank you for allowing us to speak today and thank you for your investments in the region's economy through SEVDS. Last year, nearly 75% of the Wyndham region residents supported SEVDS through their town funding. We couldn't do the work that we do there without the municipal investments throughout our region. We leverage the municipal dollars that we receive out for additional outside private, state and federal dollars that we bring to the region, and with those dollars, we implement programs. What programs do we implement? Programs that have been developed through our five-year planning process, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, that looks at our data, our assets and our challenges throughout the 27-town Wyndham region and now throughout the 44-town Southern Vermont region, 54-town Southern Vermont region, to develop a five-year plan to grow our economy. What are the major strategies in that plan, really, to grow our workforce? And those are, I have a number of folks here that can speak to specific programs that we have developed, looking at that, both within our schools, which is where we do a lot of work with Westminster, entrepreneurial programs to help startup businesses and existing businesses grow and employ folks. And I think I could, I'll pause there in terms of description of the, of the entity. We will be at 16-town meetings this year, we ask to go to all town meetings and update them. We think the regional approach to tackling our regional strategies is our best chance of success. We are asking for $3 per person at every town. Here that is $9,534. And as I said, we take all of those municipal dollars, combine and leverage them into a number of different workforce programs. So with that, Mr. Moderator, I think I'll wait and see if there are any questions.
Further discussion of Article 18. Yes, Ms. Young.
I, I have basically one and...
Okay, Mr. Beebe, please.
I've just made, this, this has come to us now for several years and we appreciate the presentation that you give. My problem here is I've just added up all the money that we have allocated for various things in town, including the Greater Falls, work that they do with people who need help, the Historical Society, the Council on Aging and SEVCA. And that all comes to $9,500. And I'm just trying to find, I, I personally find that the amount that you are asking for is above that and I think we just have, we're generous with our, our givings, but we give them to organizations that really need it because they're helping people. And this organization, while it's got a good, you know, idea, does not come as close to our hearts as all the other money that we're giving. And that's just one, and these are seven or eight. That's all. So I, I, last year I know that we turned, we, we cut the amount to something like $3,000 or $3,500, but I think that for us to, to give you more money than we're giving people that we really care about is something I don't agree with.
Are you proposing an amendment, Ms. Young? Mr. Beebe.
No, as long as she spoke to what I want, I'll keep my house up. I will, I will make $3,000 to the SEVDS.
I'm not going to speak against or for this article, but I will go along with cutting this article to $3,000 or to whatever we funded it last year. $3,500, that would be an amendment that I would propose.
Mr. Beebe proposes to amend the amount to be allocated down to $3,500. Is there a second? It's moved and seconded to amend the amount of the appropriation down to $3,500. Discussion of the amendment. In the back, yeah, no, further back, yes, thanks.
I'm just, what I'm understanding, oh, I'm Cynthia Hughes, hello. Just what I'm understanding about this program is helping train young people in our communities to become effective business people, people in the workforce, people who are active in community. It sounds like a great program to me, so I'm not sure I understand the reasoning behind cutting, cutting the request to $3,500. Education is costly, programs like this are costly, going to schools. I, I'm not part of this program at all, I just work with young people and I do think it's important that we think about them in our community as well.
Further discussion of the amendment to reduce the dollar amount.
I'm, I'm not going to go against the amendment, that's not what I, I just want to, I want to bring up at this point, I would like to know at some point what the board and the town manager are doing for planning within our administration for economic development and within our town itself. I don't hear a lot of talk about that at the board level, so if we're not willing to fund an organization that's doing that regionally for us, although we might not see a direct business come to town because of that, I would like to know what you guys are doing to support that growth within our own community, because we need someone to do it.
Your comment really isn't germane to the amendment, but perhaps...
I thought it wasn't going to change anything.
Further discussion on the amendment of reducing the amount, yes, in the back.
Hi, Tatiana Schreiber, Westminster West. I just wanted to speak to the amount that they're asking. I went to the informational meeting at Westminster West that they held, which only, and remember last year, I believe I was the person who offered the amendment to reduce the amount. And so I went to that informational meeting to ask more questions. There were only about three of us who went to that meeting. So I think they did make an effort to try to come to our community to help explain what they're doing and I think people do need to go to those kind of meetings and ask your questions. I asked a question about where the $3, I mean, yeah, $3 per person came from, why, why that's the amount they're asking? And they didn't really have an adequate answer to that. They said, they couldn't tell us why that was the figure, it's just, that's what they do. And they thought it would be unfair to ask less from different towns. It was just a matter of equity that they asked the same amount from all the towns. But they didn't seem to be bothered by the fact that our town decided for the reasons Toby said, that we should reduce the amount because for us it doesn't make sense to provide so much more money to that organization than all the other organizations that we support. So I, I think that we should, I support the amendment, I think we should offer less because it makes more sense for us in terms of our priorities to pay less. Oh, I did want to say one other thing, I asked what kind of services they provide and they do provide a service for small business entrepreneurs who want to meet with them for free, you can get advice on grants that you can apply for and other ways, they help you with business, business plans and things like that. So that seems like a valuable service for many of us who are, who have multiple jobs and maybe starting some kind of small business. I support the amendment.
Further discussion on Article 19. Yes, of course, on the other side of the hall.
Hi, Mary Major, I would just like to bring into context that we are in fact not an island and part of the broader region and I think supporting regional initiatives and organizations is really very valuable for us as a community in trying to create economic development to our town and to the surrounding towns, which we all go to and work in, play in, shop in. So I think it's very important to keep that context in mind and important to support that. I also wanted to add the thought that while other organizations might be addressing more emergency cases, it's difficult to see economic development in the same ways however it is caring for the people that we care about in the future. So, thank you.
Further discussion on Article 19. Ready for the question? We got a, and, and back, Mr. Happy.
I feel like I say this every year, but again, I went to the Vermont Chamber Annual Conference and again, it was alarming and our governor has stated this over and over again, but there's only one, one county in the state of Vermont births outweigh deaths. Champaign County, one. We are a declining populace. We have a workforce that's aging. We need to bring in new, younger folks to our workforce. I see it in my work every day. What SEVDS does is unbelievable and I'm voting in favor of the money that's going to them, the new workforce. Think about, just go home and think about, deaths outweighing births, what that impact will have on this great state of ours.
Further discussion, we're still on the amendment, so it's still about the what level the funding would be, the amendment is thirty, to bring down $3,500. Anything specific on that? We vote the amendment or seeing nobody dying to speak, uh, we'll give you another crack. I have to say, my experience with you, with representatives of SEVDS is when they speak again, they repeat the same thing they said before, so if you've got something to do, that would be great.
Thank you, I just want to respond briefly to the difference in some of the work that we're doing. The size of the challenges that we are facing, as you've heard some, some speakers allude to, is very great. Our ability to change things like demographics, it's very, very hard, particularly in a rural, in a rural state like ours. In order to do that, we really have to work together, that is the point of this. And so we think that this funding actually touches each and every person in this community in one way or another, either through a job, through impacts to your property taxes potentially, if we're helping, you know, create momentum. if we're helping, you know, create momentum to grow grand list, or through programs to start businesses. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again.
Further discussion of the amendment. Yes, Mr. Clark.
David Clark, Westminster. My other role here is I'm a member of the Union High School Board and also, on behalf of the High School Board, a member of River Valley Technical Center. I will point out, as I think Mr. Hack alluded to just a few minutes ago, we have more jobs than we have people to fill them. And that is partly demographics and it's partly because we have an economy which economists would likely describe at this point as a zero unemployment economy. Because even though there is unemployment, it's the segment of the population which is very difficult to employ. I mentioned my other roles here just a moment ago. And as this civilian is well aware, they're once again the high school and River Valley Technical Center. And I've been on that board since it became an independent district ten or twelve or fourteen years ago. SEVETS, in my experience, rarely seen in this building except at town meeting time. And in the ten or twelve or fourteen years that I've been a member of the River Valley Technical Center Board and its predecessor, which is an advisory board in Springfield, we haven't seen them at all. So I appreciate the fact that they were able to get one, two, three, four, maybe five reps out here to tell us all about it. But I would have to support the amendment based on what I have seen in personal experience, which has been very little of SEVETS.
Further discussion on the amendment. Yes, of course.
Thank you, David. It's always hard for me to get recognized. I'm the chair of the High School Board. And he is absolutely right. I am, you can't, I'm the most, biggest supporter probably of anybody around here, the youth in this community and what we need to do to support them. But I haven't seen much of these folks and I've been on the board for a long time. And I think we need to at least support the amendment.
Further discussion of the amendment. Yes, Mr. Clark, back.
Can we get a call up question?
Yes.
You, you may call the question. Requires a second. Is there a second? Twenty seconds. It's non-debatable, two-thirds majority. We are calling the question solely on the amendment right now to go down to $3,500. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
It's a non-debatable. That's what we're voting. The amendment is.
People will be confused for what they're going to be.
All right. Do you want to vote the amendment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Do you not want to vote the amendment? Say nay. The vote is in favor of voting the amendment. Are you in favor of the amendment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed to the amendment? Please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. The amendment is approved. And back to the main article, to the shallows voters of the town of Westminster appropriate the sum of $3,500 to be raised by taxes for the support of SEVETS to provide workforce and economic organization services in the Wyndham Region. Are you ready for that question? Further discussion on the main motion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 19 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Good, yep.
Barry Shamas, Westminster West. I wonder if to the point that they haven't seen SEVETS in a high school is due to our reduced funding. So that's my question to the, to the representative.
I guess we're suspended the vote while we answer a question.
Hi there. My name is Christy Beatty and I work for BDCC. I'm the Pipelines and Pathways Coordinator. I work within all four of the Wyndham County High Schools to connect students to career awareness, preparedness, and jobs. Now, I have been in the school since September and we've worked with the entire freshman class developing resume writing skills. I just was here this week working directly with Mark Gebo, who is the guidance counselor. We offer for the entire sophomore class a sophomore summit where students come from around Wyndham County and they identify a career cluster that they're interested in. And then they actually go to this fun, full-day workshop where they get to interface with local employers in that career cluster and, and connect with them, ask the, the employers to know what's necessary in order to get those jobs. And then for the juniors and seniors this year, we're starting a new plan, which is.
Excuse me, please. There was a specific question asked, none of which you have addressed yet. Could you address the question?
Sure.
Which is, is the reduced funding the cause, the causing the lack of appearance in the school?
Yeah, we spend as much time here as at any other, any other schools. So I'm, I'm literally here weekly. And I'm not sure, you know, if the school board hasn't seen me here, but I have a quote from, from the guidance team in support of us, so.
So I, I'm taking the answer to the Shamas's question is no. Is that correct? Okay. Further discussion of Article 19. Get hands? I'm not seeing hands. Let's get back to the vote. All of those in favor of Article 19 as amended to the $3,500, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. The Article 19 is passed as amended. Article 20, Mr. Allen.
I voted Article 20.
Article 20, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate the sum not to exceed $10,000 to create a probability study for the possible purchase of a parcel, the alliteration is almost killing you, a parcel of land with a house and a commercial building for the purpose of sand and gravel processing, approximately 154,000 cubic yards available. Is there a second Article 20? Did you get a second? We must have a second. Article 20 is moved and seconded. Mr. Allen.
Obviously, I got the short straw. So I'd like to make a deal where if people would just say yes, we can move on and go home. But I don't think that's going to work.
Are you calling the question?
Nice. And I wanted to say, Katie, they're, they're calling you out there. Let me just give you a quick history of where we're at. Since I've been here, which is probably too long by according to a few of you anyways, we've been getting sand and gravel and everything from, mostly from Dumstun pit. And, which has been, I've been here going on sixteen years, but I know Mark was here to tell you it's been longer than that. And what happened was, a part of Dumstun got together and actually bought the pit. And so now, this is the first year kind of like where we don't have access to a reliable sand pit. We tried a couple of them. We're not real happy with the sources. And then when we started doing research, we realized that it's a major problem that's going on with southern Vermont. There is, is to actually make sand, for example, is very expensive because you're making it out of ledge and everything. So the quality of sand, gravel and all that, we've been scrambling to try to find it, along with a lot of other towns. And now what we're facing, what we're seeing is our uses going up every year, whether you want to call it climate change or not. But we've been actually, this year, for example, we were well past one-year supply. We're into, heading towards a year and a half because of all the rain and the freezes and the rain and the new people want to get around on the roads. Can't blame you. We need to find a source of where we're going to get the sand and gravel down the road. It's alarming because we're not by ourselves. We did research. Chuckie did a lot of the work here when he's working on it right along. But I asked him to put together a list of where can we go? And basically, what he came up with is we, is anywhere from eighteen-minute drive all the way to thirty-five-minute drive to go get the fill of the sand and gravel and crushed stones that we're using is really starting to be harder and harder to find a good reliable pit. The one thing that we do know that we've been starting out with is how much do we use? And Russ went back with Chuck and actually did research and came up with an average. And we've been, for the last seven years, we've been using a total. And I'll break it down a little bit because there's a difference between crushed gravel, which is what everybody's asking to fix the roads with, sand to sand the road where we're stuck and need to get through it, crushed stone where we're trying to keep the runoff. We've been using 2,700 cubic yards every year of crushed gravel, 5,000 yards every year of sand and about 1,400 yards of stone. Then when you do the math, we've been paying like $11, $90, and $14. And it's costing us, when you add it all up, on average, about $95,000, if I round the numbers off, for us to maintain the roads for the supply. That's not counting the cost to go get it or to have somebody haul it in. That's just a, and that's the average and it hasn't, if anything, it's going to go up every year. We came across a chance in this place is a building and site that's in, right on, it's in Rockingham, but it's almost in Chester on 103. It's easy to access. It's about a thirteen-minute drive. The gentleman that owned it decided that he wants to retire sooner or later. And what first we started looking at it is that it was a gravel pit all the way around it. It was Rockingham's old gravel pit. They still are there. They're on the backside of the, the other side of the road. There was two other gravel pits, but also they're starting to dry up. We looked at it initially and just did a couple of samples and what we saw looked good. But we really need to take and explore more to see what it really is there for gravel and sand. And what we ended up coming up with, what we calculated, basically is 154 cubic yards there, which would take us about seventeen years to actually supply us. The phone is actually breaking my concentration. That's pretty weird. Anyway, what we want to do is, what we're here for today is to ask for $10,000 to pursue it. We're not asking to buy the gravel pit. We're asking to allow us to pursue it. And how it was broke up is that we need $4,500 to go do a sample. They would come in for one day and do test boards. They would come back and also pick in that cost is to give us the results. What we're looking to see is a really good gravel and sand in this particular piece of land. If it comes back and it's, it's not any good, then we wasted $500 to explore it. If we find out that for $4,500 it comes back and says it's really good material and is, then what we're asking for a total of $10,000, the other $3,500 in, in the cost is basically going to be, I actually, it's a little bit more than that potentially, but is basically going to be to actually try to negotiate the contract to see, the gentleman's asking eight, uh, $600,000 for right now. I'm not even sure if it's worth that or not, I'll be honest with you. But they're negotiable. I think it's all going to, depends on, on what the material is. There is a building on it. There's a house on it. So all that would have to be negotiated too. We'd probably be anywhere from five to eight years before we'd have to do something with buildings. And there again, you can ask a lot of questions. We, we have a lot of questions to ask. What we're trying to do right now is just to ask for $10,000, not to exceed it, to explore this, see if this is a realistic possibility for this pit. I'll indicate questions, but if anybody, I can also put pictures of it if you're unsure where it is. But it's right next to, if you're going to Chester on 103, it's right next to the old police barracks, if you know where the old police barracks is. Also, that gentleman has approached us also. He wants to, he just, just bought it as a driving school for tractor-trailer training. He would like to retire in ten years. And he was asking it for ten years. He would like to sell his maybe too. That would also be part of the negotiation, which he borders, they're all part of the same land. Anyways, I'll indicate questions right now.
Any questions related to Article 20? Yes.
This way, yes, yes, it is. I guess my biggest question is, what's the competition going to be to buy this? I'm very familiar with both sites and I'm also pretty familiar with the needs of other towns similar to ours. Though it looks to me like the biggest challenge is not the dollars, but the, the competition that may outbid us. Have you looked at that part, that aspect of it? Yes, we're not bidding war as yet. He gave us his word, he's on hold. He was asking $600,000. He's willing to finance it for that price. So he's willing to negotiate how it works on the, on, on the contest. But right now, until we tell him no, we have first rights to it. He didn't, that was his first thing, was he was giving us first rights. Yes, there's other people who are interested, but I don't think anybody's going to do anything to receive test boards to, to be honest with you.
Further discussion, Mr. Dierborn.
So a couple of things that I just want to mention. If you're looking at an investment for the town that's $600,000 and you've got to spend a little money to figure out if it makes sense, there's some due diligence that I think happens before you even get to that point. And so I took it upon myself to do some of that due diligence and to look at how much material we were using, to take the figure of 154,000 that had been provided to me, to look at the actual three acres where the building and the garage is. I spent a little bit of time talking to some folks that are in the industry, just to better educate myself so I could make my own determination. Couple of things I just want to point out. If you have an investment of $600,000 and there's truly 154,000 yards of material, if you do the mathematical equation, that means that the material is approximately $4 a yard. In order for us to deal with that material, you have to have somebody process it. So you're going to add $5 a yard. From that point, you have to have a stripping that happens to even get to it. That's about a dollar a yard. You have $2 for reclaiming. That, I think, brings us up to maybe $12 a yard. I'm fairly certain that the material that we're purchasing at this point is below that. I'm in finance. I'm very interested in the numbers and the investment. Some of the financials that I did see that were provided by the town, because I took interest in it, was indicating there was a revenue that was going to be coming from renting the buildings. You can't rent the buildings if you need the material that's underneath it. So at the end of the day, when I've done my financial calculation, I don't think it makes financial sense. I don't think that we should be spending $4,500 or $10,000 investigating something that bare bones doesn't make financial sense. If the board or anyone from the town of Westminster has financials to share that will show that it makes sense, I would be interested in securing money for any kind of study. The other thing that I want to mention is, I keep hearing that we're running out of material. There's not enough material. The other thing that I wanna mention is I keep hearing that we're running out of material, there's not enough material, the material that we have around us isn't good material. If we're truly concerned about not being able to access material in the future, it wouldn't make sense to buy this property and start processing the material. It would make sense to buy this property and hold on to it. That makes it even more unattractive from a financial perspective, to buy it, to have to pay tax on it, to hold on to it. Um, I know we were all given the opportunity to look at a quarry, I know that we voted that down years ago. If we're looking for some type of long-term solution and solve for a material crisis, I think that we would be better off looking at a, a quarry that would cost you a fraction of this purchase price and then be able to have a long-term plan. So, I, based on the information that I've taken a look at, that I've processed, I am not in favor of this article. Um, I think there's more due diligence that our select board can do in regards to the financial implications to purchasing something like this. There's a lot of unknowns with gravel pits, um, I think there's a lot of information that can be gathered and I encourage you all to vote no on this.
Wish to be heard.
Uh, obviously, Kate and I have had conversations before and, and obviously, we did numbers here and the numbers sort of look good, but you know what? It goes right back to where this is not a signed contract, we're not coming to you to tell you what we're gonna pay for. If I can't answer her questions in a reasonable manner, it, it is not gonna fly. But my whole thing is I need to have this test done to see if it is and then go back and negotiate. We might come back and say, hey, it's actually good gravel, but he's asking too much. And, uh, until we actually go back and negotiate with him, but the problem was I didn't have approval of the town to do that. I need approval of the town to actually sit down with them and the only way I can do is say, yes, they blessed a ten thousand dollar to go investigate it with you. And that's what I'm asking for.
Further discussion of Article twenty, yes, Ms. Shones.
I'm curious as to what the, what's behind the ten thousand dollars for the study? And whether or not, um, you're looking at contaminated materials in the, on the property? Because I know that that would really also create a much greater extent of, of, um, of cost? And is there any, have, have, has that question been asked at all as to this particular site?
I, I didn't understand your question, I guess.
Have you considered whether or not they're contaminating materials at this site? Is that at all within the realm of possibility?
That's what we're, that's part of the, that's part of the ten thousand dollars. They're gonna do bore samples and then find out if it is, then they're gonna come in and see. What's go, after the bore samples, if they do pass, is basically to do the contamination study, which is part of all the permits you need, okay? We did an initial study to realize that we don't believe we need like Act two fifty, we don't need that, but we really can't tell you that until we actually have a firm come in and do it. But he asked your question, is we're obviously not gonna do anything till they pass this, this test.
Do you understand how those, um, contamination studies will exponentially grow if they find something?
It, it's.
So, is it, well, it'll be just a cap, so if you finds, if you find something, the, of some contamination there, then does, and you've already spent your ten thousand dollars and then that, that ends all the studies?
Basically, yeah, you would, it, that'd be part of, you could, multiple things could end the ten thousand. Not getting a permit could end the ten thousand, you see what I'm saying? It's all part of the ten thousand dollars is we, we'd have the best, in the worst cases, we'd come back and say we just wasted ten thousand dollars. The best cases, I'd come back to and say, it's clean, it's done, it's, it's gonna work and this is what we paid for it to make the numbers work. But it's all part of the ten thousand, it's your question.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on Article twenty, yes, um, in the back, so Mr. Stam.
Peter Stam, Venus Hill, I'm just curious to know about the sequence of events and, uh, if the ten thousand dollars were to be approved and, uh, the price was agreed upon, when would that be decided and when would we be voting on the six hundred thousand dollars or whatever price that might be? And does it make more sense to, uh, go to contract subject to? I mean, a handshake and somebody saying that they've given us first rate is nice, but a verbal agreement is worthless. Uh, especially if it turns out that it's more valuable than that. So, if we were go to, subject to the approval, it might make more sense. And I'd also like to know about where the six hundred thousand dollars is gonna come from and when that would be decided.
Uh, one is six hundred thousand, he's willing to, uh, finance it for that price, so I'm not sure, uh, which would mean when you get done, we, you do it over ten years, sixty thousand dollars a year for ten years is what he's, that's part of what he originally offered as a negotiation.
Would they not take the town's approval?
That's correct, all that would take approval.
When, when would we decide on that? Next year at town meeting or would they?
No, I think it would be before then, I'm actually hoping that, uh, you know, it's a slim hospital, we can do the bore samples between now and, and this next budget, the next meeting we'd have in forty-five days. But I don't, I can't promise you that. Just give you an update, it would, it still wouldn't be ready to come to you for a vote. It wouldn't be ready for a vote, probably, I don't know, maybe fall or something. We'd have to come back to the town for a vote.
So, it might make more sense to go to contract now, subject to the approval, which would be?
Before we did the ten thousand, I would have to have a contract written up that he's gonna allow us to do the, the sample and that he would hold it until.
Correct.
That's correct.
So, we'd be spending the ten thousand dollars knowing that we had it under contract and it wasn't gonna be taken out from under?
That's correct, before we even spent the forty-five hundred on the tank.
Okay, okay.
Further discussion, Miss, Ms. Mitchell?
So, I went and talked to Russ about this and he showed me photos of what was done with the, um, testing so far. There's a lot of water-washed rock in that, that they, that he said they would crush for, um, fixing the roads. My question is, who's gonna do the crushing, who's gonna oversee that business? And does that make the town the owner of a business that we now have to oversee? And we're having trouble overseeing our budget as it is? And also, I, the taxes, I believe, were something like eight thousand dollars a year to be paid to Rockingham? I don't know, I, I just wonder about this tax situation between Westminster and Rockingham, we're back to there again. Could someone please clarify this?
They'll hopefully be part of the ten thousand. We can't come back to you till we actually have a written agreement with all the permits, what's there for gravel, what's the source? We're gonna, we're gonna mess about how much is gonna be sand, how much is gonna be crushed rock, what's the supply there? I'm confident of the fact that, yeah, you know, you could say that if it's being taxed eighty-five because of the house and the building, we would have to get an agreement with Rockingham, what are you gonna tax once the house and building's gone? Assume it's gonna be less, but we actually have to come up with that agreement.
So, answer the question about the town becoming the owner of, I guess, a business? Because there's gotta be somebody there crushing.
We're gonna hire, uh, Chuck, is it once a year, we're gonna hire? Yeah, once a year, we, we're gonna hire a firm that comes in and actually crushes it to give us the supply? And then us, we're not selling it. If we were selling, we're a business, outside that, we're not a business.
So, the crushing would be a limited time span?
That's correct.
Of roughly how long?
Uh, Chuck, how long would it take for them once a year to come and crush it? He said we'd have.
Further discussion on Article twenty, up in the back, Ira, all the way back.
Hi, Elisa Alvedino, I'm just curious how much the land is assessed for currently?
Uh, three, was it three eighty-five? It's not six hundred, that's. Three, was it three, was, was it three thirty-two or three eighty-five? Three, uh, three thirty-two, sorry. It's been praised right now at three thirty-two. That's where the building's on it and everything else.
Mr. Matta.
Um, two questions, clarification basically, based on Mr. Stam's question, discussion of that. One is, um, does that ten thousand dollars include the development of an Act two fifty application? If that, is it more than ten acres, that's one question I had.
Uh, Russ and Chuck both investigated and what we, we had a verbal conversation that it did need an Act two fifty, we now would need it in writing.
Did or did not?
Does he? Do you, Chuck, do you have it confirmed now?
Okay. No, it's probably not less than ten acres, yeah, yeah. The other question I had was, we're talking about a mo, on an article that would provide spending this money after July first and it sounds like there was some discussion of doing it sooner than that.
Good point, good point. We've been able to actually mess this all up pretty good, but yes, we might have to wait till July first. But hopefully, when we come back at the next meeting, we get a budget, we'll figure it out.
Okay, further discussion, I think we got up in the back here.
Hi, Jason Smith, uh, Craig, I saw a packet of information, I can't remember, but I believe at the end there was a, uh, a total savings towards the town on, uh, cost savings on aggregate. At the end of that seventeen years, if we use dollars material, uh, what was that figure?
Well, you know, that's taken in, that was a report that we did and we took into account of good rental from the property and all that. But it's, the last number was two sixty-nine, but, you know, going back to what I was originally looking at, this costs us ninety-four thousand, three hundred dollars a year for, to go purchase and have somebody that we actually buy it from. And what we figured out, to run the machine, to actually have it crushed, it runs five dollars a yard for it to be, to help, to hire somebody in. And that's so that we calculated if, if somebody gave us this piece of property, it would cost us forty-five thousand dollars a year. We had no expenses that other than, like say, we owned the land pretty clear, which means we'd be saving like forty-eight thousand dollars a year in savings because we wouldn't be buying, we'd be owning it. Now, in that forty-eight thousand, we gotta pay that six hundred thousand, so obviously there was just some calculations we gotta do in there. But right up front, if we ended up owning it and we got all done with it, outside of a few thousand dollars a year for its taxes, that's, this is kind of the same as what we're originally looking. I don't think it's really all the total savings, it's just having access to good sand and gravel that I'm more worried about, to be honest with you. Obviously, we, we don't wanna pay a lot more for it either, but, so we gotta come back and show you that it's a good product, it's something that we could use for the next seventeen years and then make the numbers work.
Further discussion, um, I think the next hand that's now, I'm not gonna call you on it, tell other people. Um, over here.
Barb Hutchkins, once the gravel is depleted and you find the end of the use of the gravel pit, would you then be able to turn over the land and sell it?
Uh, hopefully, hopefully that's a, I, you know.
About that too then?
Yeah, you know, the last thing that I personally would ever wanna do is buy something. I mean, for us to own the land and house is not a really good idea. So, I went in with a, kind of an attitude right away, why the heck are we doing this? But we're down to not a lot of choices and then when you're figuring it all out that when we're all done, if we can get, take care of ourselves for even fifteen years and then walk away with a piece of land that we could actually recoup somewhere at cost, we're gonna probably need that to go invest in another gravel pit. But hopefully it won't be, I won't be around gonna make that decision.
Further discussion, uh, Mr. Stoddard, we have your opinion on this one.
Thank you. Um, I'm, a few things, I guess. The ten thousand says for a probability study, and that means to study the probability of that being a viable project. It doesn't include, Craig, you said thirty-five hundred, but if you take ten minus your forty-five for your estimate to do your study, that's fifty-five hundred left over for your handshake deal, so that's a deposit. You have fifty-five hundred for a deposit. The answer to the other question, the properties currently placed in three thirty-two, like we said, that holds fifty-eight thousand dollars in their, in that appraisal is their land value. Town of Rockingham has that land valued at fifty-eight thousand dollars. If you pull the house and the barn off of there, that piece of land's worth fifty-eight thousand dollars on the retail market. Um, real quick, I do property appraisals, I do property appraisals for towns on a town like scale. We recently did a reappraisal in a town near here that had three gravel pits in. We were tasked with valuing the materials coming off of that as a value to that property. Um, we took one of the properties that sold, we knew what it was valued at at a sale price. That sale price included a gravel value to it. We then backed that number into what per acre value for gravel is. And we worked it with all three properties and it's about fifteen thousand dollars a acre. So, if you have three acres at fifty-eight thousand dollars, two acres are possibly a viable gravel pit, that's thirty thousand dollars. Your appraisal value is eighty-eight thousand dollars for that piece of property, plus your buildings, but we're gonna tear the buildings down. So, my first point is, is yes, it looks like it makes sense when you draw a scale of what we're spending and what the six hundred thousand's gonna be, what the seven hundred and seventy thousand's gonna be to crush it and taxes and other costs, we're gonna get money back possibly from the rent, whatever, it looks good. But on value scale, you're paying three hundred thousand dollars per acre for two acres of gravel. I, I applaud Chuck and everybody who's done their due diligence to find a place for gravel. Makes perfect sense to secure our needs of gravel, perfect sense. But there has to go a point to where value of what you're purchasing comes into play. Um, real quick, to the resale of it, the excavation depth of that property according to some, um, a land survey that I saw is about four, thirty feet. Nobody's gonna buy a three acre parcel thirty feet below grade with an expanded gravel pit of forty-four acres behind it. Doesn't matter, three acres, expanded gravel pit, we're gonna end up paying taxes for the rest of our lives on twenty-eight thousand dollars, so it's not that big a deal. Anyways, um, I guess what I would do is offer an amendment after that and say that the amendment be for the forty-five hundred for the actual feasibility study. Then if it's a viable project, come to us with a plan of how we're gonna purchase it instead of a backdoor handshake.
I don't, I guess I don't have a problem on that, other than if it turns out to be good gravel and sand, I guess we're coming back to another meeting to find out where you wanna go, but.
Um, could I, first, I need to get a second on Mr. Stoddard's amendment, do we have a second? You guys, hey, Russ? Quiet. I need a second.
All second.
Thank you. His, his amendment is moved and seconded, now discuss.
Kate, can you repeat the amendment?
The amendment is to reduce the amount to forty-five hundred dollars, which, Nate used the word feasibility study, not probability, but in a way. Just reduce the amount to the, to forty-five hundred dollars.
I guess I need some input into this. Russ, why, were you just at fifty-five hundred, I'm a little confused on that. Nate, did you say, Russ, I think he's confused of what you said. Right here, here's just a breakdown, I don't, he never, did you say fifty-five hundred dollars?
I only went off of, you said forty-five, it's the feasibility.
So, the breakdown of the ten thousand dollars as we have it right now is forty-five hundred for coring and soaring soils analysis from a, a actual. for coring and soaring soils analysis from a actual service that we asked for, we of course put it out to bid. Then the other thirty-five hundred that we know we would need to spend, and it is an estimate, includes building values, limited building structure assessments, property values with area comparisons, and estimated resale value of the property once the gravel was over. So that we could come to you with a complete package, not an estimate on when we're done, what is it worth? That's what the other thirty-five hundred, and there was, that is only eight thousand, there's still two thousand dollars if we wanted to, if we found that there was a real issue with hazardous materials, we could do a preliminary and then back out and say, no, we're not interested in this property and move on. So that's what the ten thousand was estimated for.
So discussion on Mr. Stoddard's amendment to reduce the amount to forty-five hundred dollars. Yep, Ms. Dearborn.
Reluctantly, to me. Question, the amount of money for the boring samples to test, did I hear Craig said, did you say that that would also include the environmental piece?
Yeah.
Okay. So really just boring down to see if we have good soil, right?
And they give us the results.
Okay. So we did some digging at the site already, am I correct in saying that, I read that in the minutes? And everyone was raving about how great this soil was. And am I correct?
But it's not a quote, but...
I still am scratching my head as to why we want to invest money in something that financially doesn't make sense on paper. And I know that a gentleman talked about the savings being almost three hundred thousand. That worksheet that you saw, I have, and it talks about having a revenue source for ten years from those rental properties. I don't understand how we can have a revenue source from those rental properties if we need to access the material below. So any figures that were shared with a select group of us are really inaccurate, so if anyone did see them, I would caution you in taking those in absolutes, because I don't think that they're a hundred percent accurate, I think there's a lot of unknowns.
Further, Ms. Stoddard, do you want to be heard?
I need to back up. When Craig was talking about, so I'm at the ten thousand, and I'm at the amendment that Nate made to forty-five hundred. I heard forty-five hundred, and then some amount of money going to the owner to secure the property.
I don't know who said that, but it wasn't me.
Okay.
Nate, Nate said that.
Yeah, I, we heard that, and you said it to me the other day when I talked to you too, so I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. So, so we don't need to give him any money. So we're really at eight thousand dollars.
Right, and that's what I was gonna say, it didn't add up, just because we have two thousand extra in there.
And the two thousand extra is for, just in case, we need to do something.
There, there you go, that's all it was. I mean, the only one we're sure was the forty-five hundred, because that's, Chuck, you're right, you called and got a contract to do it for one day, and that's what they were gonna do. So that's actually unknown what it is. We're coming up with estimates, what it's gonna cost us to go through the value evaluation, and limited, all the other stuff of thirty-five hundred, and we put another two in, just in case we're missing something, okay?
Thank you, I'm the same person I was when I talked five minutes ago.
Yeah, and who was that? How am I supposed to know?
Rick's going over, Dearborn, I've been on this property, I don't know, a couple hundred times, I guess, that's a lot of logs to Hanson Savage. That particular billing that's on there, that's a purse of rents, there's traffic going in and there all the time, so that's really a non-issue as far as that rental property being used for ten years and traffic and all that sort of thing. The other thing, the bulk of this property is above the highway, so talking about going down thirty feet is not correct, you're probably going down maybe half that feet, so the retail value of that property is difficult to ascertain at this time, but it's not gonna be a piece of property that's thirty feet below the highway, that's not, that's not gonna happen, that's not the way that property lies. Personally, I think we all need to remember one very important fact, this town, select board, and highway department has an obligation to keep our highways as safe as we can over the next ten or fifteen years. And things are gonna change in this gravel pit business because there is not a lot of gravel available, and we need to keep that in mind also. I'm very much in favor of this project, I'm surprised at where it was, I didn't know about it till today, but I do know the gravel that's on the Rockingham pit back there, and I fully expect that what's gonna be underneath Hanson Savage Garage is gonna be probably the same thing. There's been trucks in and out of there for quite some time. They've trucked lots of me for at least twenty-five years, so I'm sure there's gonna be some spilled diesel fuel and oil on that property, what effects of gravel, it may seem seen. But I think ten thousand dollars to find out exactly what we have is a damn cheap thing, and it's very wise on the part of the select board and the highway department to go this particular route. So I'm very much in favor of this, and I think we need to look at the long-term effects of what this is going to do for our town. Ten thousand dollars is pretty darn cheap. Thank you.
Further, further backup, I have a couple hands. Yes?
I'm Tina Biosi, I'm from Westminster. It just makes me nervous as a person who's going to be here for much longer than fifteen years to hear someone on the select board say that it's, you know, maybe in fifteen years it won't be solid anymore, but that's okay, because it seems like paying twice the amount of an appraised value for something that is then gonna be worth even less after we've been done with it, and then we're gonna be stuck with it for years and years afterwards is short-sighted, even if we're looking fifteen years ahead, I wanna know what's gonna happen twenty years ahead, and I don't wanna be paying for that piece of property and the taxes for the foreseeable future.
Okay, further discussion on Mr. Stoddard's amendment. Let's pick, let's pick up this one on the way down, and then we'll get to borrow.
Hi, Rachel Cohen again. If I understood correctly from the beginning of your explanation, the forty-five hundred, after the forty-five hundred analysis, is, there's a no, no, a go-no-go point, so if that analysis doesn't show the quality that the town needs, then any further monies are not gonna be spent anyway. And after, at that point, we still wouldn't have the information that we need from the further expenditure to know whether it works out financially or not. So the, we're not, we're not saying spend ten thousand dollars regardless of what you find, if I'm understanding correctly. After the analysis is done, if it's not good, we stop, we look somewhere else. So it seems like the amendment is saying, then we have to come back and talk about this all over again, but we still don't have the information that we need to know whether it makes financial sense to go forward.
That's, that's correct. It's forty-five hundred is just, and if it comes back and we all assume that, hey, this is not, this is not gonna work, it's not good gravel or whatever it is. The thirty-five hundred was legit, I mean, we really gotta go in afterwards and do some studies to see the answer, what Katie's asked and what everybody's asked, and to see, is this not contaminated, can we get the permits and all that? So it could cost up to ten thousand dollars, but hopefully at ten thousand, we're coming back to you saying, hey, in that ten thousand, we're coming back to ask you to buy the gravel pit one way or the other. At forty-five hundred, different numbers, we're just gonna tell you it didn't work out.
Ms. Taylor?
Hi, Barbara Taylor. I was working at the town hall in Putney when they had this big discussion about buying the, buying the pit in Dummerston. My question to the board is, we're not the only town that's looking for gravel, and I'm assuming that you've done diligence and maybe contacted Putney, Dummerston to see how that's working? Are there any other towns that we could collaborate with? Maybe there are some small towns that are in the same boat we are, and maybe we can hook up with them.
We've talked about that as a possibility. If we owned the pit, obviously we could actually, you know, share it with another town, but it's not that big of a supply if you look at it, it is for us for fifteen, seventeen years, but if you bring another town in this that quick, I don't know why, go back to what Katie said, maybe we wanna sit on it for a while just because we got other sources, I don't know, all those are good questions that we gotta come back to you with an answer. I know I've talked to, I mean, Cynthia was there when they did Putney and everything. I haven't heard anything that's, that's gone wrong there, but I think they did the right thing, that was a million dollars each was a lot of money, but they had to secure it, so, but we're gonna have to come back, we'll go see answers.
Further discussion on Mr. Stoddard's amendment. Yes, up on the side here.
Having trouble understanding why we're on the hook for even the forty-five hundred dollars, now there may be, this is a normal packet, but I don't understand it. Is the landowner willing to split that forty-five hundred with us or anyone else to say his property is worth this, especially if the inflated amount is being discussed? Why are we on board for the investigation?
I never asked him, you know, so... I don't know why he would do that, but I guess he can ask him, somebody's got paid forty-five hundred and we're approaching his land, he's got it on hold for us. Don't know the answer to that, I guess.
Mr. Gregg?
Chuck and Greg, I'm certainly supportive of spending the money, especially if that's what, you know, our highway folks say is a good idea, but I was gonna ask about regionalization too. It did occur to me, if this is next to what was Rockingham's pit, would they have already sort of assessed this property and said it was, you know, it wouldn't have worked for them? And then just also, maybe this isn't quite what Sevitz and DDCC do, but it seems like there's a regional issue here, and maybe there are five towns that each spent a hundred thousand dollars for gravel, you could have a business that was selling five hundred thousand dollars worth of this stuff, so maybe that's something you all could help solve a problem for a bunch of towns. Thank you.
Further discussion on Mr. Stoddard's amendment to chop this down to forty-five hundred. Yes, stand here, Ms. Deutsch.
Irene Deutsch, what's our next alternative to finding gravel?
I wish I had a plan right now. We're still trying to, we have, we don't have a contract with anybody right now, right, Chuck? Do we even have a year of sand left? Yeah. We don't even have one year left anymore. It's been a tough year, we normally try to keep two to three years, and we've already been a year and a half, you know, a pile that was two or three, we're into it for a year and a half, so this is a quicker decision than we thought originally, because when we moved out of Dummerston, we actually bought extra sand, you know, to stockpile it, and but now we've had a bad year, thank God we did buy the extra. We go, we tried, we're going over to JP over at Acworth and getting some sand and gravel right now. Chuck, are we going anywhere else? It seems to be the sand is more of a problem, because you can man-made crush gravel and crush rocks, because you just use ledge and everything, there's, we have access to that, it's the sand is normally, you know, it's natural sand is what it is. To find a pit that actually screed it, take the stones and the rocks out and make gravel and stone, and also get sand is what, is what we saw there, that's why we're looking at it. And I'm concerned more about sand than anywhere else. To find good clean sand that we put on a road is hard to come by.
Mr. Major, Steven Major?
It's, it sounds like the amendment to allocate only forty-five hundred for this would not allow the select board to answer the big questions of should we do this? And so I would urge that we defeat the amendment and get on to the main question, which would then allow sufficient funds, the ten thousand, to come back with a actual answer for a subsequent town meeting of whether to purchase this parcel.
Are you calling the question on the amendment?
Sure.
Is there a second to that? There's a bunch of seconds. All those in favor of voting on the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Is there further, no, actually, we go straight to the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Nays, nays, nays. I believe the nays have it. The nays do have it, the amendment fails. The article stands at ten thousand dollars for a probability study. So there a further discussion of the main motion of Article twenty? Yes, Mr. Stoddard?
Real quick, like I said before, I'm in favor of doing something, I think we need to, I think it's very valuable to do that. I agree with Mr. Schoenover. But their hundred and fifty-four thousand cubic yard number is based off of an area, length by width, time depth. And their depth they're using is deeper than what he said. This project's only viable in the big scheme of what we're gonna spend and how much we spend annually anyways. If we can get more than ten years out of it, if you do the math, by a lesser depth, we go way below the ten years of viability. Now your cost to benefit is not there. The only way this works is if we get more than eleven, I'll correct myself, it was eleven, it was eleven and a half actually, more than eleven and a half years' worth of material out of this. Craig has said a couple of times now that we've already used a year and a half's worth of material. So knowing that, we're using an extra half a year each year, we're cutting the life of that source. We're below eleven and a half years, it's not viable at the six hundred thousand dollars.
I am a little confused, because if we pull that much out in eleven years, we still, we were now gonna spend more per year. And that ten thousand, Nate, is up to ten. Forty-five hundred, it's gotta prove it, it's three acres and it's, well, you know, they are, of material, it's five acres, three acres of material.
I accept it to ten, I agree, now I hear a plan for the money, I'm on board with the ten.
Okay.
Your hundred fifty-four thousand cubic yard number isn't a viable amount of material if you don't dig the length by widths times the depth that you've come up with. If you lessen any one of those, you don't get a hundred fifty-four thousand cubic yards. At ninety-one hundred cubic yards a year, divide that, you get, you're sixteen point eight years, and you guys are saying you're gonna get seventeen years. Any less amount of a hundred fifty-four thousand cubic, you're getting less years out of that.
No, I agree with you. Until we do the bore samples, whatever, we do start, we find, we find like the corner's really good, but when we go on the other side, it's no good. It's gonna come back with a number of what you're saying, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, until we do the bore samples and see how, how much is actually there, I don't, I would agree with you.
And I agree, and I don't know if the wind and chair is gonna get me in trouble, but I walked down below that property the other day, there's a significant pile of spent farm material, manure stuff on the backside of that property.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna move it, they know it's there. No, it's not, no, it's not, it's... Yeah, we were there, we walked, Russ and I, and he put it there for, originally to cover the land when he's all done.
Further discussion on Article twenty, down here.
My name's Juan Boslin, I live in Westminster. It seems to me that, I get the objections, but it feels like we're going in circles. Ten thousand dollars feels like, feels like a small thing to spend, and we got people who, they're giving it their best shot. I think we, even if we blow the ten thousand dollars, I'm right on the edge of calling the question, I wanna give people a chance, though, but it seems to me that this is money that needs to be spent to, you know. I would like to call the question.
Is there a second? The motion, the motion to call the question is seconded, non-abatable, two-thirds majority, all those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The question is called, we are at the main article to see if the voters of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate the sum not to exceed ten thousand dollars to create a probability study for the possible purchase of a parcel of land with a house and commercial building for the purpose of sand and gravel processing approximately one hundred fifty-four thousand cubic yards available. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article twenty is carried. Article twenty-one, Mr. Beebe.
Oh, I'm sorry, I moved this article to one.
Article twenty-one, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster will raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred seventy thousand dollars to fix approximately six hundred feet of town road on Henwood Hill with payments equalling thirty-seven thousand five hundred or less per year for five years. Is there a second Article twenty-one? Article second, Article twenty-one is moved and seconded, discussion of Article twenty-one, Mr. Beebe.
My first question is how many people here know where Henwood Hill Road is? That's a good start. This request is to repair a section of Henwood Hill, covered, covered bridge road, some of us will know it by that. That has had significant damage about a year and a half ago. About a hundred feet of the road dropped, about two feet. And between Vermont Transportation and the town of Westminster, we have temporarily fixed it, made it narrower, and stabilized it. Not exactly going by the script here, but it is right on an S-turn on the Gageville or Northwestminster end of Henwood Hill. It's become a safety issue. It should also be mentioned that in the year 2022, the bridge on Route one twenty-one will be closed for three to four months, period, end of discussion. You expect it to detour around it. This is the quickest way to get from I-91 to Northwestminster, Bellas Falls. Anybody's ever measured it, it's five eighths of a mile closer to go over Henwood Hill to get to Bellas Falls than it is to go the other way. If you don't think it gets a lot of traffic now, it does. When this bridge is closed, my fear is that people are gonna look at their GPS on their car and say, ooh, there's a quick way to get there. And we've got a one-way section of road, or we've got a one-lane section of road on a blind quarter for a hundred feet there. So we'd like to repair it. The additional pressure on this road and its one lane because it will be the quickest way to get to I-91 from Northwestminster and Bellas Falls. This project has been estimated under three hundred thousand dollars with available grants, present highway budget, and labor compensation from the town of Westminster. We're expecting the total amount needed would be no more than a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Further discussion of Article twenty-one, yes.
Hi, I'm Michelle Boslin, and I live in a house with my husband on property directly adjacent to where this impacted portion of the road is. In the ten years that we've lived in the property, at least three cars have gone over the side and into the ravine at that exact corner, and that was when it was two ways. Right now, there's only a room for a single lane of traffic to go around that corner. So for the last two years, living on that road, you can only go in one direction. And at night, you can kind of see when the headlights are coming, and you can slow down and see them and wait, and it's not dangerous. During the day, I cannot tell you how many almost head-on collisions have happened in that corner, it's a lot. It's really a safety issue, and I hope that the town will support this because it's really needed, there's a lot of traffic on that road, sorry. Oh, and if it's needed, that the town needs to go into our land in order to accommodate that extra space to make it safe, we're willing to give whatever part of that is needed without cost so that the project can be made safe.
You got a hundred fifty-four yards, you want to take one of them?
You're welcome to add.
Further discussion of Article twenty-one. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-one, a hundred seventy thousand for repairs Henwood Hill, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it, Article twenty-one is carried. Article twenty-two, Ms. Young. Before we start the discussion of Article twenty-two, I have to acknowledge that I am the author of Article twenty-two, which sort of puts me in an odd position in moderating the discussion of it. I will attempt to be, I, well, I will be neutral hopefully on it, but if anyone objects to me moderating the discussion of this article, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Beebe.
I move the article as warned.
Guess there's no objections. Article twenty-two, as warned, to see if the voters of the town of Westminster will approve formation of a school advisory committee consisting of five members to be elected by town meeting with two members to serve three-year terms and three members to serve two-year terms, to have responsibility and authority to review, develop, and recommend for approval the following items in regard to educational programs housed in publicly-owned facilities and operated at public expense for the purpose of educating pre-kindergarten through grade eight students who are children of Westminster residents. One, amendments to the Articles of Agreement of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. Two, governance structures for the operation of educational programs. Three, policy, budget, personnel, reconfiguration of grade levels, school closure, and capital decisions necessary for the operation of the schools. Is there a second? It's moved and seconded, discussion of Article twenty-two, Mr. Major.
Hi, David Major. I was, as you know, I was chair of the Westminster School Board until the state declared that the school board no longer exists, which happened July one. However, the school board has continued to, to, the school board members have continued to meet with the new transitional board for the merged district of Westminster, Athens the forced-merged district of Westminster, Athens and Grafton. So at least several of us every meeting of that merged district have been attending to try to represent Westminster's interests in the, in the new merged district. The, I think the simplest way to explain this, this article is that we would like to continue having a group of people who are ready and willing to represent Westminster's issues in the merged district, in the new merged district. Also, you should know that the, that the lawsuit that thirty-three towns, thirty-three plus one towns, really thirty-four towns, have brought against forced merger is still in the process, it's still being deliberated by the Supreme Court. There were oral arguments on January fifteen at Middlebury that several of us attended, and then on February nineteen, the town of Huntington had their oral arguments before the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court has yet to make up its mind how it might rule. It is possible the Supreme Court will rule to say that forced mergers were unconstitutional and that town go back to having, to running their own schools. It's also possible the state, the Supreme Court may say the state is, was right in going ahead with the Board of Education rulings to force the mergers. It's also possible the Supreme Court may refer the situation back to lower courts or to the legislature to say there are problems with it and you need to fix it. So we really have no idea if it's possible that a group of, if we approve this article and then vote to have some members put on this advisory board, that it might end up being the sort of, the new Westminster School Board, if the, or at least the seat of that Westminster School Board, if the Supreme Court vote or rules that forced mergers were unconstitutional. More like, well, but it's also possible the advisory board will simply be a backup for the Board of the merged district to help advise them on the needs of the Westminster school in that forced merger. I also want to just acknowledge Melissa Carlsen and Cheryl Charles, who are our Westminster residents who volunteered to be, they weren't on the Westminster School Board, they volunteered to be on the transitional board for the forced-merged district of Westminster, Athens, and Grafton, been putting on a huge amount of, putting in a huge amount of time because if you think of it, what was work done by five people from Westminster, five people from Grafton, and three people from Athens is now being done by two people from Westminster, two people from Athens, and two people from Grafton. It's a lot of, it's a lot of work. So I guess that's it, thank you.
I would put, when you read this article, you read it with the numbers one, two, three, and the way it's worn in the book is A, B, and C. And since I want, it's, I don't want that technicality, the possible technicality to affect its validity.
Point well taken. I think I took the article off my own computer. You're absolutely correct. I misread, so change one, two, and three to A, B, and C. That I don't think needs an amendment, it's simply a moderator error, so we'll correct that. Mr. Axtell.
Dan Axtell, I think the, I would like the Assembly to hear the legal opinion of attorney Larry Slayson, in particular, whether the challenge to this motion would be subject to summary judgment.
I don't even know who can respond. We do have a visitor from out of town who is faintly raising his hand, Jack Brier from Grafton, with, if there's no objection, he's been in the thick of this, we'll hear from him.
Hi, I'm Jack Brier, I live in Grafton, although I think a number of people in Grafton thought I lived in Westminster all these years. I am the unfortunate chair of the forced merger board, and yes, there was a discussion with attorney Slayson, which I believe the members of the, the select board also heard, concerning whether or not if there was a dispute, whether there would be adjudication that would go in favor of this or not. And his view was that there was indeed a question. My view is that we probably don't care because we think that it's really important for each town to have a constituency who can advise and advocate for their communities, that can do some of the work that the combined board has been really unable to do, particularly around developing a permanent Articles of Agreement. In fact, we are permanently merged and that can act as the rump of new boards should the Supreme Court rule in favor of the litigants, which we are one, to restore traditional order, restore the traditional boards. The reality that we face is that many of our original town boards have had their terms expire or about to expire. So there literally is no governance structure that we can put back in place absent having these backup boards being available. We will be bringing to all of you and all the other town members of Grafton, Athens, Westminster, April ninth, to talk about electing a more permanent, semi-permanent board, but we do, but that board has no means to revert to the old structures because in fact, no one has ever even agreed to the Articles of incorporation we already have, the Articles of Agreement that has been imposed on us. So I think this is a good idea, we're completely comfortable with it, given it a test drive for, David, how many months have we been having the individual boards come to, the, what we call the town boards, it's been months, right? Right, so I'm comfortable that this is a good idea. If there's a challenge later, there'll be a challenge later, but I can't imagine it will happen anytime in the foreseeable future.
Further discussion of Article twenty-two, Ms. Gifford.
My initial question is what on this extensive list in the amendment is not actually already the responsibility of our town representatives on the W U E S D? I don't quite understand why we need this duplicative structure right now. Also, it's been my hope that any future merge board would have been designed better and would have had proportional representation and would have had enough members to do the work. We've put ourselves in this position by refusing to have the original plan for a board, by just dragging our feet on it unfortunately. There has been a notice, there's been an observation that the town's attorney, at least as reported by Mr. Brier, had said that this would not pass legal muster, and if you want to hear that in slightly more blunt terms, you can listen to it on Fact TV because he summarized it very succinctly there. Again, my essential question is what on this list is legitimately given to an advisory committee when we have representatives, even though their terms expired already, because again of our lack of action? I don't understand how this even passed muster.
Further discussion of Act twenty, Article twenty-two. Any response? Yes, Ms. Charles.
Thank you, Cheryl Charles. I was, as you all know, an elected member of the Westminster Town School Board and now do serve with Melissa Carlson on the forced-merged Athens, Grafton, Westminster Board. To Ms. Gifford's question a moment ago, it is correct that the list of topics that this advisory board is being asked to address are analogous to what the board members' responsibilities are. However, this is advice, and I can just tell you, David Major said for such a long time that if this forced merger occurred, all of a sudden we would have such a reduction in the number of volunteers who would be able to come to meetings and help advise us. That is so true. So we're looking for more public engagement, more involvement, more wisdom from town members to help inform the thinking of those of us who do serve officially as board members.
Further discussion of Article twenty-two. Yes, Mr. Gregg.
John Gregg, I guess I do sort of side with Dan, I think we do, we do need to know exactly what the town board says, and I guess I wonder whether, even though it says advisory committee, it's still a wording, especially recommend for approval, are we not de facto setting up a town school department just like we? just like we have a town highway department? And whether that, what they recommend before town voters? And so I do think we need more legal information about this.
Further discussion of Article 22. Ready for the question? Article 22, which, yes?
There's space down here, you know? I, I'd love us to just go on to the question, but I do have a question first. Like, what are they gonna do to us? I mean, so if it's, if we weren't supposed to do it, well, we'll quit doing it. I mean, how bad can it be? Is my question. So I guess, I guess I'm willing to call the question.
Down here, did she call the question? I know, this is the tough one. I didn't pick the order correctly. Question is called, is there a second to the, to the motion to call the question? I have a second. The question is called, the issue being voting on the main Article of 22. All those in favor of voting the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
I believe, now it's a two-thirds. I still think we got two-thirds. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes have it. We are on the article. Article 22. "To see if the voters of the town of Westminster will approve formation of a school advisory committee consisting of five members to be elected by a town meeting with two members to serve three-year terms and three members to serve two-year terms, to have responsibility and authority to review, develop, and recommend for approval the following items in regard to educational programs housed in publicly-owned facilities and operated at public expense for the purpose of educating pre-kindergarten through grade-eight students who are children of Westminster residents: A) Amendments to the Articles of Agreement of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District; B) Governance structures for the operation of education, educational programs; C) Policy, budget, personnel, reconfiguration of grade levels, school closure, and capital decisions necessary for the operation of the schools." All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
You're gonna call that for the ayes. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 22 is approved. Article 23 is to elect members for that advisory committee.
I move the article as warned.
The process, this is an election from the floor, which we in Westminster are not used to. We do all have to do the majority of, well, pretty much all our elections by Australian ballot. So the process I propose is that first we place names in nomination, including, people can nominate themselves. If we get more than five nominations, we will have an election, which can either be by voice vote or if chosen by the assembly, by paper ballot. But the first step is nominations for this, for membership on this committee. And I, and given the way the article is structured, you should say whether you're nominating someone for a two- or a three-year position. Floor is open for nominations. And self-nominations are accepted.
I nominate...
Okay, I may need a little help with this. But I nominate Rick Gordon. I nominate Elise Manning. I nominate Vanessa Stern. I nominate, oh, okay. Oh, Charlie Hutchinson.
Thank you.
Yes, and I don't... Which years? I don't care the slightest. All nominate, well, the only person who's... Why don't I nominate, I, let's see, not recording. Charlie Hutchinson for three years. I, David Major for three years. Elise Manning for two years. And, let's see, who else? Rick Gordon for two years. Was that it? And Vanessa Stern for two years. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Boy, you filled out the roster. Are there other nominations? If there are no other nominations, we don't actually have to have a vote. We can just cast one ballot for each of these candidates.
Move the nomination of the employees and have the moderator cast one ballot on the head of the town meeting for the slate nominee.
Is there a second for Mr. Dean's motion? It's moved and seconded to close the nominations and cast one ballot for each of the nominees, which I hear by the way. You have your slate. Article 24. "To transact any other proper business to be brought before the town of Westminster meeting." Mr. Dean.
I will not agree with you at this meeting.
I'm disappointed. Mr. Major.
I wanted to bring it to the select board's attention and ask for their action for next year to have childcare during the town meeting. And to pay for childcare, my daughter Marion was at the meeting and did express that she felt she had to leave because she was told that her child was too loud. And that is not the way. We don't want young parents to have to leave the meeting. So I think it is very important that we actually have childcare. And now that we have just a town meeting, the select board is going to have to make sure, I hope, that that can be done for next year's meeting. Thank you.
We did do that for years and interest dropped off, but it may simply, I agree with you that young people, young parents should be allowed to participate in the meeting. I actually was resisting making any comment about those children in part because small children don't really annoy me. Although if you can't hear what's going on, it's a problem. So I also would encourage the select board to consider finding a way to provide childcare during the meeting. We've done it before. Thank you. Any other business? Yes, Russ, Mr. Hodgson.
In the back, there's Wyndham Regional Broadband Project survey sheets. I'd like to have Bobby Kilburn come up and explain to you if she's still here or...
She's gone.
She's gone. So in the back, there's a windmill, excuse me, a Wyndham Regional Broadband Project sheet. We have still residents that do not have appropriate internet connections. And as you fill out this survey, it's not for or against, it's to help get some of the other people the service. So please don't feel that, oh, I like my service so I don't have to fill it out. Everyone should fill it out so that these folks that don't have service can get service. And that's what it's all about. It's gonna be a Wyndham County feasibility study, not just Westminster. And whether it fees, it comes out to be feasible or not, the surveys are going to be very crucial in that activity. So please take one, return it, or fill it out today and put it in the box. Thank you.
Also, I would like to throw in one reminder. Mr. Brier already mentioned this, but the merged school districts such as it is will meet in this room on April 9th at 6:30. And that will be, so it will be, anyone from Athens, Grafton, or Westminster is eligible to participate. And I encourage you all to do that. Yes, Ms. Speaker.
Ms. Speaker, is there any way that the town special meeting can be the same day that the unified one is? So that you don't have to make more, not many?
Sounds tight.
I was asking if there was any way that the unified school board meeting could coincide on the same night with the town select board meeting?
I think it's gonna be too tight.
Other, other business?
I have one question.
Yes, Ms. Charles.
I was gonna report on those assisted living, senior housing committee that started, but I'll just say that there are surveys about your opinions on hospital senior housing in town. They're up back, there should be boxes, but you can also drop them at the town hall, the Butterfield Library, I was hoping to ask Lisa of the Westminster West Library. And at town meeting, they'll, I mean, Tuesday, during elections, there will be surveys. So please take one and think about it and fill it out. Thank you.
Other, other business? Yes, Ms. Renault. Wait for the mic. You have to talk right into the mic. It's really necessary.
Fran Renault, Westminster. I have a statement and a couple of questions. I'll start with the statement. I would like to see the Community Improvement Committee advertising that there is money available for low-income loans for people in Westminster. And my first question is that I understand that Russ is the animal, is a control, animal control officer? Is that correct?
He says by default. He's crackling with enthusiasm down here.
Okay, well, I would just like to know what salary gets paid to him for that.
Ooh, pulling down the big bucks on that one, are you? He's indicating a goose egg.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, other, other business over here.
I'm hoping next time we come back here that we can get rid of the chitter chatter behind the wall. Maybe it's my ADD, but it's kind of hard when it's some conversations. And I know we're probably really sick of being here, but there's an awesome boys' varsity basketball game being played here at 6 o'clock tonight. The boys are in the finals. Very exciting. Thank you.
Other, other business. The admonition about the people behind the new wall is well taken. It's particularly difficult in the back of this hall, I think, to hear. So you have to remember it for next year, but please bear that in mind. Ms. Waldo.
Just had a quick, Sarah Waldo of Westminster asked a question about the childcare issue. Was there childcare provided last year?
No, it's been a few years since we have it. It was? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other, other business? Way over there in the corner, Sally wants to say her piece.
I think we owe Ira a big thank you for being such a great friend.
Other, other business? Yes?
I'll just shout it out, Ira, take it easy. Just if you, I mean, if you don't make the basketball game or after the basketball game, it comes fully out and we asked it tonight. It's a fundraiser for the juniors going to Mexico in about a month. Dinner, dancing, silent auction. But if your loyalty is with the basketball team, I... Thank you. 6 o'clock, I'm at...
Other, other business? Seeing none, I will declare the meeting recessed to voting on Tuesday. Please come to the Westminster Institute and vote. I have a second.